Well, hello everyone. Very nice to be here and I need to be honest here. I'm just a little overwhelmed from the tour of your facilities here. I had not been in this district before. And you know, it's funny when we're trying to put this together, we have been, I'll talk a little bit about not just the award in Keith, but the process. So there's 10 different regions. And it was kind of difficult to put this together. We had a couple of times, we had this scheduled and the weather, the one time I was ill, so we were just working through it. Keith, I appreciate your patience. I'm so glad I got to come up. But every time he would say, now whenever, this one, the board meeting is, but you need to get up a little early because I want to take you through the school. And a lot of times superintendent will show us around and so forth. But I think of the districts I've been in and I think of the communities and one very, very close in regards to your population here and also your ADM, the students in the building. And it just felt so warm. It felt like I'd been here before. It just has such a good flavor to it. And when you can put carpets in as long ago as you did and have those carpets look like that, like they just got here this year, I mean, it's just amazing. So that tells me something for where I get started. That tells me this community cares about their schools, that the teachers, the certified and classified care about this place and the kids. And what a great place to go through your high school, your elementary, middle school and all that in regards to prepare for the rest of your life. So job well done. So should I just leave now and be done with it or what? But anyway, what I'd like to do, I want to talk about Keith for a few minutes. I won't take a long time. I know it looks like you've got a pretty healthy agenda there. But so my name's Dave Axner and I'm the executive director at BESA, which is the Buckeye Association of School Administration. I've been with that association for 10 years, just three now as executive director, the deputy prior to that and did a number of different districts as superintendent. My last one was Dublin City before I retired and then Chagrin Falls, which was, I see a lot of similarities in regards to that beautiful community and walking through your buildings here, which is a feather in your cap for both districts. But anyway, so you understand what BAS is. I think, so there's a teachers' association, there's classified associations, there's unions and so forth. Basically, our main mission is to support our superintendents. So you probably know that it's been, it's a little tougher to be a superintendent nowadays. It's a little tougher to be a school board member. The national politics has filtered down into what we do and decisions and it makes, it's tough to stand your ground. You still do, but it's hard and you get some backlash. And it wasn't always like it is now and for one that's been in this for over four decades, I can tell you it's, it's just different now. So congrats to the school board members and volunteering basically to do what you do and hear from the community and everyone else of what isn't right. It's a tough job. So our association has right around 900 members and those are made up of primarily superintendents. We have almost every superintendent in State Ohio that is a member. And then we have some assistant soup, some directors and even on down, we've got a few principals that join our organization. What we do is try to be there, not just their mouthpiece, but their ear in regards to what we need to do to lobby or for professional development. So one arm of what we do is work with the governor's office, very close. We have a really good relationship. We don't always agree, but we have a good relationship there. We work with the general assembly and we have governmental relations person that's down there, general assembly and down to state house, a lot more than any of you would want to be. But the good news is we've again got some great partnerships with our legislators and we always seem to be at the table. So that shows that they respect our opinion and again, they don't always take, but when we hear from our members, what Hicksville wants and these other districts and counties and so forth, we can do our best to push that forward. And sometimes that means money coming into the districts in regards to grants and things that I understand you're waiting for one soon. So good luck with that. We have representatives from the Department of Education workforce, used to be the Ohio Department of Education and Steve Dakin. We got, when he was elected director, we were one of the first calls he got and he wanted to come meet with us and know where we were on certain items that have already been done and things that they're looking for in the future. So that made us feel good about pretty much where we are. Professional support, I think one of the best things we do, we have 15 standing committees. And so just draw down a couple to mention. We have one now because of the switch from ODE to DO. We have one that we just called the department. We have Ohio High School Athletics Association. We have a report card. We've got a higher education committee. We've got a legislative committee, retirement committee and all of that. So basically what happens at any of those, and they meet, legislative meets a lot every month, but the others meet three or four times a year. And just to give you one example, with the, just the recent changes in regard to the High School Athletics Association, Doug Youth, the commissioner, will always come to those meetings and present. And there'll be about 30 superintendents there that can ask him questions, they can give opinions and so forth. So you think across the board with SDRS and everywhere else, those CEOs are coming in. It's not just throwing a couple of staff at us and we have an opportunity to talk to the people that are really going to be involved in those decisions. So each year in our 10 regions, we select, I shouldn't say we select, but one superintendent is selected in each region for the exemplary leadership award. And thus is the reason I'm here. And mainly it is for service and leadership. Those are the two pillars in regards to this award that I'm giving tonight. And then our goal is really just to provide some external validation for what you already know. You have an unbelievable superintendent and just look at the history and they want to talk about him and the talents that he has, but also the continuity from, from superintendents and others that have gone through and I'm sure changes in school board and so forth, and you still saying, stay strong. Got to tell you, being at a ton of districts for years, don't take that for granted. So be really proud of that and congratulations on what you do and what you do together. So the clear criteria for the award is you must be selected by your peers, you must have community involvement, active professionally, a leader of character and innovative. And this person that receiving the award must set an example for his and her peers. And there's absolutely no question that Keith not only has checked every one of those boxes, but we could all go around the room and say, well, you didn't say this, you didn't say that. And there's really not one on there for superintendents in regards to how good you are for kids. But it's clear what his main primary focus is in regards to making his decisions. So as you know, I'm here tonight to give this award to Keith Countryman. And the, a few things that I'd like to say because I did a little homework and I know Keith, but I want to get a little more details and so forth. So I asked people that you work with, I asked people, you'd be surprised, some superintendents too, that just gave me a few tidbits. So nothing you got to worry about. That's the good news. It's all good. So anyway, I want to congratulate you and right at the top of the list, there's the Blue Ribbon School. And that's amazing. Got to be part of one of those in Chagrin years ago. And everybody sees the celebration and the excitement, but what goes into the applications and bringing all that information and data and programs together, it is tough. So congratulations. Yeah, that is, that is something you'll take with you forever and everybody knows when you're Blue Ribbon that it's, you don't have to explain that award, right? So congrats. So Keith's mantra is we do what's best for kids and he seems like he's done that every single day. So some of the things, and again, sorry, because I know you probably know a lot of this, but serving lunches to, you know, the students to driving a bus. And interesting, we've got a few superintendents that actually do that and some that have to do it routinely. But just to have that, that skill and that, I guess, sense of being, when you're, you're driving a bus and you got, you know, 40, 50, you know, elementary and middle school, high school kids behind you, you've got to be quite a person to be able to do that. He's very, it's very clear that he's very student focused. Your colleagues say that you worked very hard with staff for a very positive climate and culture, that he's very supportive to staff and try, you're not scared to try new instructional methods and they noted the training and what you do in regards to new staff to send them off and make sure they know we're a little special and we do a few other things. So, so just a heads up, the privates aren't any better than us. We have, we have a system that's put together in regards for them too. And again, that, that's something that's really unique because there are not a lot of schools that do that. So passion was being a chef and you had a restaurant, right? So you've got some people talking about that. And I will tell you, customer service and running a business and do that, I can only imagine those things and skills that you're able to bring with you here, even probably at a few of the potlucks, I'm guessing you kind of throw those skills around. That would be my guess, you know, I don't know. So from, from the restaurant to education, the, the skills go on, even understand you're pretty darn good on a piano also. So too bad we don't have a little more time here because I'd love to hear some of that. But the, you know, the thing that, one of the things that I jotted down here that is unique because there's very few people that started, have started their career in one district and are about to finish their career someday in the same district. And that just doesn't happen. So you know, I'm sure you bleed these colors and all those things that we talked about and you showed me on the tour and so forth. He was like, he was showing me his brand new own sports car or in his own home or whatever. And I'm just smiling back there, taking it all in. So that's why I'll be driving home now and, and just thinking, oh, we talked about what you showed me in that short period of time. So anyway, this award, you know, although Keith is going to be the one taking this home and the plaque and so forth, you don't get one of these if things aren't in order with, with everybody around you. And that starts with the school board, all the way down with your community and so forth. And it seems to be those districts that, that struggle and that we, we don't visit are ones that aren't clicking. And when we don't click as adults, obviously that, that comes back to our students, which unfortunately hurts them. So anyway, with that, you know, I just want to congratulate Keith for the 2023 exemplary leadership award. Keith, if you'd come up here and accept this and I've got to get a picture, I'm guessing you guys do two. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
He's going to be all over Twitter here in a minute. Great. So somebody want to take a picture?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. I really appreciate it. I appreciate you coming up here, also all the way from Columbus. And we, one of my favorite things to do is to show off our building and I hope that as I did that, I recognize the people that are taking care of the building and our students because it's not me, it's all, it's everybody. So I'm thankful for all of them. Appreciate the award. Thank you very much. Be careful going back.
I will. You know, that's probably the, the one thing I didn't say, but it just gives me a lot, a lot of pride in regards to what your superintendents and others do coming down to Columbus. It's one thing, we run a meeting and we have 30, 50, 60 superintendents, we'll have fall conference, we'll have, you know, 500 plus women conference, conference 500. But, but we don't think about for those meetings and those committee meetings, how you guys are driving two and a half hours in the morning to get there for two hour meeting and then two and a, and now you're staying late because you couldn't do anything and you're in the road a lot of times. So anyway, appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice.
All right. So yeah, once again, congratulations Keith. That's really pretty awesome. Eric, you're up, Director of Operations.
Yes, kind of good winter so far. Hopefully snow season's soon to be behind us and be time to start taking all the snow removal equipment off, getting it prepped and ready for next winter, start pull snow stakes soon hopefully. But that'll be time for mowing and all the outside work. We have two mowers over at Beers right now for the downtime guarantee program. Once they're done with those two, we'll take one more over and swap them, bring the other two back. We have three mowers total that we do with the park and the school. And then we're also starting to unwinterize the park properties. Today was the first day, I'm not sure about baseball, but I know softball went down today. And so we were able to get the football field locker room building unwinterized, got the water turned on. They have any issues or anything, hot water heaters kicked on and the village, thank to the village, they came in the last minute, emailed them this morning, they sent somebody out this afternoon to get the water turned on to the meter and then everything was good to go. So once it warms up for good, we'll turn the water on to the other properties in the, at the park. Working with a few vendors right now, getting quotes for new stair treads. I know he said about how nice the building looks, walking around, but it is also getting 15 to 16 and a half years old maybe. It's over 15 years that the kids have been in the building, but just like the field house, I mean, how many times have we walked the hallways and, you know, in the classrooms and in the field house before we actually moved into it and schools the same way. Pretty much every fire extinguisher in the building, they purchased them in 2007 when they got the bid and all the flooring stuff was put in shortly, 2008 timeframe. So we're starting to see some wear on the flooring, stair treads, entrances, VCT tiles, especially like in the little kids' restrooms, rolled linoleum floors. So we met with Mike and Keith there last week, kind of look to see what the game plan is moving forward. I know Kevin Miller's here, he had set aside some money for future carpet replacement HVAC equipment, which same thing, HVAC equipment's all put in the same time. Haven't had tons of problems with the equipment themselves. We have three units right now that we've actually lost control of where they're running by default settings and you can't get communication boards to communicate with computer systems anymore. So they are going to try to buy one, used one on eBay and I've been waiting for two weeks for them to get one set up in a classroom to see if we can get that unit to run. We got a big spring break coming up. Last spring break, we shut down all the geothermal system in the building for some leaks on some flanges and victalik fittings. They weren't able to get it all done, weren't able to get all the parts in time. So they buttoned up everything and so now we're in the process of the spring break, shutting the system down again and repairing the other leaks. They're, they're very small. I mean, we've got a couple of containers underneath one of them, the worst one, I keep pumping. Methanol solution out into a five gallon bucket about every three or four days and put in the makeup tank. So also have all the air filters in the whole building to change, all the belts to check, all the smoke dampers in the building need to be inspected. It's on the four-year routine by the state fire marshal. We also built four more platforms for graduation or spring break. Carpet company will be in here to re-carpet all nine sections of the platform. Working on summer projects, got some areas of potholes out in the blacktop. We did put some cold patch in, some of them a few, a couple of weeks ago when it warmed up, especially in the main event parking lot, a couple of spots. But we have a few areas that need milled out, repaved, possibly reseal the main event insurance, the stamped concrete, gym floors being refinished and lining up the mulch blower and mulch delivery over the summer. Also working with grants, the one was the applied for, you gave me a lot of contact information on that, Jen. It was the linking technology grant, which was pretty much anything that where you could tie your law enforcement to quicker response, anything from outdoor shot detection to license plate reader recognition to people trying to enter the building with visitor management system. Met with five of them, really liked two of them, narrowed it down to those two, down to one. And we did apply for it. We were denied initially and they said that there's still possibly the next round of funds that we wouldn't even have to reapply that there's possibility we could, we would just get it. We'll see what happens. It was for $32,450 and that got us two years of three cameras on the outside for license plate recognition, one of the bus loop, one of the main entrance, the one down the state route 18. And also did outdoor shot detection that would tie into a fire alarm panel if a shot was fired outside, automatically trip and call authorities to put the building in lockdown. Also filled out, there's a possible another grant out there right now for replacing building cameras in our building. It's a federal grant, federal, they frowned upon hike vision cameras due to them being made in China and possibly calling home to China. So it's a security risk. I know Jeff Schaefer, Matt Hoffman's aware of it, but there's a possible grant out there that we could possibly apply for. Still waiting on word from Motorola on that one. And also there's some other grants out there for up to 200 to 500,000 dollars in HVAC upgrades, access controls, everything else. But I've already met with three companies and they said that we're currently too efficient and we wouldn't even qualify for them. So that's good and bad. And I currently have a grant out there right now, I applied for, for a new drivable floor sweeper. I'd be able to sweep the gyms, the field house, all the hallway carpets in the cafeteria after lunch and, and you know, breakfast time. All the bigger areas, your workman's comp, I met with ergonomics and another lady. It's kind of funny, it was Lisa Conine and Mona something, but it was Mona Lisa. I don't know. We sat there and talked to them for about an hour and a half. They took a tour of the building, filmed us how, how our custodians go around the building and sweep and how they sweep the hallway, sweep up after lunch and breakfast. And they were 100% a fan of it. They did approve everything on their end. It's waiting for the person ahead of them for final approval. So every few days I go on the grants management portal to see, but still no, no news. And we're still working to finalize the round four, the 204,000 some dollars that we got for the shooter detection system and ballistic film to be installed. They did, they're waiting for the weather to get a little bit warmer at nighttime so they can finish putting the rest of the ballistic film on. We did just add all the, can't see because the door's open, but the window blinds that Ms. Smith had ordered, I believe, and installed those a couple of weekends ago. And also the, they tested the shooter detection system during the teacher in service here last week also, seemed to go pretty well. Be able to monitor down on the computer, down in our office and be able to track where the shot was fired, the oldest shot, the newest shot, you can see which way the person's going. Our law enforcement came in, they borrowed a shot box, I believe, from Napoleon and they shut off some rounds here. So we've been working on scoreboard going into the softball field, the post got set last week, new 30 foot flagpole going on the softball field, new play clocks at the football field and coordinate location with all the contractors for that. Electrical, if you remember electrical last year at the end of track season, anytime you, no offense, you work with the state and getting permits, it's not quick or even AEP in general. We've been working on it, I don't know how many emails been sent back and forth, but the electrical has been directional board under the track, new pole was set, new pad mount transformer set, Darren Brown's been on site, run electrical, all new wiring to both buildings. He's just emailed or texted me back tonight that they should get final inspection this week. So hopefully we get power for the track before, I think April 2nd or April 4th might be their first home track meet. So want to make sure we get power down there. The building, all the sports are starting to move outside, but now we're starting to have everything on the inside of the building, all the music programs, award programs, coronation, junior high dance, graduation, everything will be coming up here soon. Got quotes from New Era and Sweetwater on new silent system for the gym. Of course gym equipment's getting 15 years old too. Had a lot of issues, you can ask Mr. Highlander, Ms. Kaufman, ask Mr. Countryman and it's kind of, microphones kept dying on us. And so we got quotes from two companies and one was substantially cheaper for the same equipment, if not actually the higher quality equipment was cheaper from one company versus the others. We had all the bleachers and backboards inspected. We had a few miscellaneous items, nothing major, but it was almost $7,000. Now this is how funny it's going to sound, $7,000 in repair if we hire the company to come and do the repairs or we buy the parts and they ship them to us and we do them and it saves us about $6,400. So we'll be doing those in-house. So and a couple of other items, lack of storage is starting to become a real big concern in my department at least. Keep buying more stuff, sometimes only gets used one or once or twice a year, but it takes up a lot of space and we're running out of room. Bus barn isn't still high on our radar. Feel free, I'd love to give you guys a tour of our bus barn again, I know I did this a few years ago, but when we got rid of our maintenance building and do a steam stem building, we lost a 2,000 square foot of storage and a maintenance area. And now we have, I mean, my garage, my house and it's as big as our storage for our whole school district. So our storage rooms are anything for graduation stuff to when we got tumbling mats for cheerleading and wrestling mats and risers for the band, pep band. And Mike went to order copy paper for us. For 14, 15 years, it's always three skids at a time because we go through about nine skids of copy paper a year and we're only able to order when we're down about half a skid, order one more skid because we don't have room to, for egress wise fire code to even make it through there. So it's becoming a big concern in our department. So it's been busy.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks for always taking good care.
So I was at another school in the district over the last couple of weeks and I used their restroom and I was appalled. And just a huge shout out to our custodian staff who, our bathrooms look amazing.
We have one gentleman, third shift, that's all he does, go around, power washes every night.
Absolutely amazing. I, I've been in-
I tour schools when I go to them.
Truck, I've been in truck bathrooms, you know, like truck stops that were nicer. And I specifically went out to see how old the building was and it was only about eight years older than ours. And I was absolutely astounded at how awesome our building looks. So kudos to our custodian staff.
Yep, they all do a great job.
A lot of compliments at the girls' basketball tournament. I was here from about 5:30 in the morning to 8 o'clock that night.
Couple thousand people are in here, yeah.
Nonstop compliments.
Yeah, they do a great job, they do.
You should come in at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning because the whole place just, it's my favorite time. The whole place smells so good from the bathrooms that Matt cleans.
I even took pictures. I was ecstatic.
Oh, I take a lot of pictures and send them, I bring them back to the custodians and show them at things I see at buildings that are a lot newer than ours, 210 in the Finesse County area.
I'd like to speak on behalf of a student who graduated here fairly soon after it was built. You're kind of, you have to respect the building, was a big rule, unspoken most of the time. So congrats on the teachers and principals and all that for instilling that in students as well. So it can be attributed to a lot of people.
So thanks again, Eric.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
You're welcome.
I wrote down some things you could swing by tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I have some questions about it.
I got one.
We don't need to do it now.
No problem.
We are moving on to the principal reports and I know how much you guys love to go first. So I'm going to pick Aaron because she's on the left.
Perfect. That's who, we had that figured out. I was going to go first.
She's taking credit for it though.
No, I am not. Thank you, Aaron.
All right. In the high school, winter sports are winding down pretty quickly here. Girls' basketball ended their season last week at Ayresville when they played in the sectional semifinal. Boys varsity basketball will be at Ottawa Hills tomorrow, playing Ottawa Hills because better seed hosts now for basketball. Their game's at 7:00 PM. Our wrestling team has also performed extremely well in the postseason. Nadia King will be competing at the girls' regionals on Sunday, March 3rd. And then George Green and Brayden Dix both advanced to districts, which will be held March 1st and 2nd at Rossford High School. Our juniors have been working hard for the last two months. They probably feel free to tell you that they've been working extremely hard and they're ready for the ACT to be done, but their ACT test is tomorrow. We're holding that in the field house. There's no preschool tomorrow. Thank you to Mrs. Kaufman and the preschool teachers for allowing that to happen, working with us. The size of this class, we have to set up the entire field house and also thank you to Mr. Bassett and his staff for doing that. Just too many students this year in the junior class to fit into even that big room out in the field house. So they'll all be stationed out there and then some small groups in the classrooms out in the field house. But great things I've been hearing from our juniors as they've worked on that ACT prep that we purchased. And thank you to Mr. Payne, Mrs. Lysit for helping to facilitate that ACT prep coursework in their home bases. Really our juniors have been working hard on that and really hopeful that it, that it pays off for them in their scores. Our academic team will travel to Northwest State Community College this Friday, March 1st for an all-day quiz tournament. And then how they did in the season, both the JV and varsity did extremely well this year. JV took first place in the GMC league and then our varsity finished in third place. So congratulations to both of those teams. Also a big weekend here at Hicksville High School. Our annual musical will take place on March 1st, 2nd and 3rd. Our students are performing Les Mis this year at the Huber. Friday and Saturday night both start at 7:30 and then Sunday starts at 2:00. Tickets are $15 for all ages and the tickets are sold at the door. Lots more events coming up. This is our, our busy season in the high school. Second round of innovative interviews is Thursday, March 7th for our sophomores here at the high school. This is for the second semester group of the financial management class. The finals then, the finalists from this round will join with semester one. here at the high school. This is for the second semester group of the financial management class. The finals then, the finalists from this round will join with semester one for the semifinals at PFW and they hold that on Wednesday, March twentieth, so good luck to all of our sophomores that are competing in that. Then our middle school and high school archery club will be traveling to the state tournament in Columbus on March ninth and tenth, so we wish them the best of luck. Our annual senior coronation is Saturday, March ninth at the Huber at six PM. Seniors have been working hard on that, on their skits and preparing for that unique event that we have here at Hicksville High School. Tickets for that one are eight dollars and those are sold at the door. And then a dance for our high school students will follow here at the high school. That will run from eight to ten thirty this year and tickets are six dollars. Permission slips for outside guests are available in the high school office for students to pick up. Our high school student council will be sponsoring a blood drive with the American Red Cross on Monday, March eleventh in the mezzanine. There are still slots available if anybody wishes to donate, you can just go to the Red Cross website and enter Hicksville High School to sign up. And then Wednesday, March thirteenth, our senior government class is traveling to Columbus to tour the state house with Mr. Blue. And following that, the following week, our seniors will be on their senior trip to New York City. They will be gone March twentieth to twenty second on that trip. That's all I have for about the next month.
That's all?
That's what I was thinking, mine's a lot shorter. So our junior high sports seasons are coming to a close for the winter. All of our teams in boys' basketball, girls' basketball and boys and girls wrestling, they all had great seasons and proved a lot throughout, we're really proud of our student athletes and our coaches. And I want to say a special congratulations to our seventh grade girls' team and boys' team in basketball, they both made the championship game of the GMC tournament, so had really good seasons and they were really excited about it, so that was really awesome to see. Our seventh and eighth grade classes had an incentive for the second quarter, it took place back on Friday, January twelfth. Students earned the incentive based on good grades and behavior as well as attendance and they were treated to an afternoon at Brian Lane's bowling alley. I want to thank our seventh and eighth grade teachers for organizing and planning this trip to reward our students. And I want to say a big congratulations to, or thank you to Bob Weatherhead and the wholesale house for their generous donation to support that trip. Our fifth and sixth grade incentive also took place on that Friday, January twelfth. Students earned this incentive also by good grades, behavior and attendance. The fifth grade had an electronics day, they were really excited about this, they got to bring any electronic of their choice. We saw Xboxes, Game Boys, we saw it all, some games, some old time games and it was really cool, they all brought it in and for a whole afternoon, they hooked them up and played it and shared it and they were going around playing different games and they were really, really into it, it was really cool to see, so an incentive that they work for. The sixth grade had a candy casino that day where they played various games for different type of candy, they played it all afternoon and the fifth and sixth grade both had a really awesome time, so I want to thank our fifth and sixth grade teachers for organizing and planning that as well to reward our students. On Friday, February sixteenth, we had our middle school house assembly. Students and teachers played a lot of games and had a lot of contests, had a lot of fun. And I want to say a big congratulations to Brandon Elston for winning our February essential ace. He's an awesome kid, treats everyone with just so much respect, a really hard worker and is just really deserving of this award, so Brandon Elston, congratulations. On Tuesday, March twelfth, this is my last thing, our junior high and high school band, so and choir, grade seven through twelve, are going to have their mid-spring band concert beginning here at the school at seven o'clock. It'll be split between the commons and the gym, so we're really looking forward to that.
Perfect. Kirsten.
A huge congratulations to our first grade and third grade students who recently performed their elementary music programs for parents last week. Second grade and fourth grade students will be performing their program for parents on Thursday, March twenty first, with second grade at five thirty and fourth grade at seven o'clock. Mrs. Wendell has just been an amazing addition to our staff, her passion for music was, is just very evident through our students. A kindergarten program is scheduled for Tuesday, May second at five thirty. Kindergarten registration is scheduled for March seventh and eighth here at the school. Currently we have sixty-seven students scheduled for registration. Just a reminder that our current readiness and kindergarten students will not have school on those days, so the kindergarten teachers can assist with the registration. We have family literacy night coming up on Monday, March eighteenth from five to seven. The theme this year is journey to the center of the earth. The evening will begin in the commons with a free meal provided by Melissa Crawford and her crew. A variety of groups such as the United Way with Dolly Parton's Imagination Library and the Hicksville Library will be in attendance. Parents and students will have the opportunity to participate in a variety of crafts and activities throughout the night with the opportunity to win raffle items. All students will receive a drawstring bag and a book for just attending. And then at six o'clock, the parents and students will transition into the elementary gym for a presentation for Midwest schools, Midwest school shows. A huge thanks to Sandy Brown and the title team for all of their work behind the scenes as well as Kristy Hoffman and Connie Klinker. A huge thanks also to Jackie Sebenauer and the Twenty First Century for partnering with us so we can bring Midwest school shows into the school, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Angie.
Mr. Bassett kind of already gave you a little bit of information about this, but this year I've, I've taken over the responsibility of conducting our emergency and safety drills for our school. On February twenty first, we had an in-service, a staff in-service where we conducted a simulated lockdown drill. We had our local fire, or sorry, police department come in and assist us with this drill. They were able to borrow a shot, it's called a shot box, from the Napoleon Police Department and that morning of the staff in-service, we did a quick review of our procedures and protocols for lockdown. And then we told the staff, do not evacuate, but when you hear the shots fired and the school goes into lockdown, do what, our normal lockdown procedures and protocol which is shut, lock, sweep the hallway, shut, lock your door, pull your shades and you would then disperse your students in different areas of the classroom, now you do not go into a corner. And then, you know, listen to these shots and you think to yourself, are you, would you evacuate or would you lock down in place? The, the local law enforcement came in and they did the shot boxes for us, so they toted those down our hallway and were, and it was like a pop, 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 simulating those shots. Our, our emergency shot detection system worked wonderful, it went right away and shut down, or locked down our school and the staff quickly and efficiently locked their rooms down. It happened very quickly and, and I know the law enforcement and all of us thought things went very smooth for that drill. After the drill was conducted and completed, we came back together in the cafeteria and we went over, we debriefed, we went over any questions, concerns. I can say ninety-nine point nine percent of our teachers said that they would not evacuate, that they'd stay locked down and barricade just because they felt like that was, our school was safe in how, with the local law enforcement with, you know, just all of our, our great safety items we have in the school, they said they felt like just staying in place would be a good thing to do. They also said if they, you know, knew for sure shots were somewhere, they, they might run on this side of the school, so the high school, but, or evacuate, but, you know, they said it is, it was comforting to know that, you know, they were safe in their rooms and if they were locked down in place. So it went great, a great, a big thank you to the local Hicksville Police Department for their assistance during that simulated lockdown drill with the staff and as well as the Napoleon Police Department for lending us their shot boxes so we could simulate this drill.
Angie, I'm just curious, did you, I know you debriefed, but did you send out a survey too, because I know sometimes people say things on surveys that they may not say in large group.
They were given a worksheet that, they were asked, you know, will you evac, would you evacuate or would you lock down based off of what you heard? And that's where I got the data that ninety-nine point nine said they'd stay. Some of them put little comments on that sheet of things that they felt maybe would help or should be put in place. They, the lockdown announcement was loud, so it was hard for them to hear where the shots were exactly coming from, but otherwise I was going to do that, I still was, was going to send that out, but I also got some feedback that way as well.
That's good. All right, thank you guys very much. Such a good admin team. Four County, Eric, you have something for us?
The only thing I have is that Director of Operations, Rick Hoopie is going to retire, so looking for a new Director of Operations that's coming here.
Okay. He's a very nice man. And, Mr. Countryman?
Yeah, I do have a few things. I know I had sent out a notification to our parents in regards to the early release that's scheduled for April eighth because of the solar eclipse and the decision to do an early release was done countywide actually. Now the three schools on the other side of the county, they're actually closing all day long, they're closer to the main area where this is at. I want to say, because I've had phone calls about this, but when that, when we first heard about this like over a year ago, my first thought was, let's make this a learning experience and I got right on the computer and was looking to see about buying a thousand pair of glasses for all the kids. But then, given the timeframe of it, it just is not going to work. The peak of the eclipse is at three ten and my thought was, I don't want to be dismissing kids on a bus or out in the parking lot in the peak of an eclipse because of the danger of looking at it and, I mean, you know, I just didn't think that was smart. So Mr. Arnold at Fairview and I, we decided, and the EMA thought it was a good idea too, to dismiss two hours early and by doing that, yes, the eclipse has started, but before we're very far into it, I'll have all of our kids safely at home and then, you know, with the parents. And so we felt that was the best decision for us. Honestly, you know, with us being farther away, we felt that that was appropriate for us. Could be a cloudy day and no concern for anybody and I didn't want to forfeit a whole day not knowing, so that's what we're doing here at Hicksville. Anybody has any questions, feel free to give me a call. Another item I wanted to talk about and I talked to Mike about this a little bit too is band uniforms. The band uniforms that we have were purchased about fifteen years ago, I believe, and if I'm not mistaken, they were like eight years old when we bought them, used from someone and they've seen their better day. They're in pretty bad shape and we believe it's time to replace those. Now, the exciting thing to me is though, not that we're going to have to spend some money on uniforms and before I go into that, I want to say that Zach is working with the music boosters and, and for them to work with us in financing or paying for that, so it's not like the school's buying it all, part of it's coming from the music department, but the exciting thing about all of it is, I don't know, some of you will remember, some of you won't, but I'm a music person, so for years I was trying to increase the music program and I made music mandatory, band mandatory in fifth and sixth grade and we got instruments for everybody through donations and different things and we required them to do that with my hopes of the music building up, the band program building up, just never seemed to do that. We'd get a few and then it fluctuate up and down quite often, but right now, our current numbers, we have forty-five kids in the sixth grade band, which is voluntary, not mandatory. We have thirty-eight kids in the seventh grade and then eighth grade and ninth grade, there's a total of twenty. If you added that all up, it'd be a hundred and three, now chances of all of them staying in band isn't going to happen. But one of the things that I've always said was, you know, if we could just keep ten kids in each grade level, we'd end up with a forty-member band and it's just, to me it seemed so easy that we could do that, but we've struggled to do that. So this is exciting for me, I'm hoping that of those forty-five sixth graders, that'd be awesome if we, you know, could keep all of them, obviously, but I, I would be tickled to death with a forty-member band.
Mr. Countryman, we're already starting to look at numbers for next year too, so the current fifth graders that are choosing for sixth grade next year, we think we're going to have above forty again, so.
Okay, well, that's, that's great news and, you know, I love to invest in programs that have a lot of kids in it, so I think that's a good thing. So I'll keep you posted on that. And then I wanted to let you know, you know, we've, I received an email from, I forget one of you about our openings here and we have two third grade openings currently and those, you know, we've posted that internally and we've also posted it externally, no decisions have been made yet, but how that, how that works often is, you know, like Sandy Brown, we know Sandy Brown, she's leaving, this is her first year, so there was a kindergarten opening and we posted that internally. Well, one of our third grade teachers wanted to move to the kindergarten spot and Mrs. Kaufman interviewed that person and was okay with that switch and so that created a third grade opening and then we had another opening that was already going to happen in third grade, so when we have these openings, we post them internally and sometimes teachers within want to move to a different grade level. Well, that creates their opening then, so that's, we're at that point of the hiring process and so right now we know we have two third grade openings. We have started interviewing for those positions, but we've made no decisions yet. And we also have a high school special ed position, Mrs. Blue's retirement, that will be replacing her as well. So we know we have three openings, but none have been filled at this point. The other thing that I wanted to note is, I kind of was watching the weather, Eric, you'll, you'll think about this too, and we're supposed to get a bunch of rain tomorrow and I'm kind of glad, I've been waiting forever for a bunch of rain, so I'm hoping we get a real goose-rounder because I want to know if that dang on drive is going to back up or not. And ever since we had that done, or they redid it, there's never really been a big rain or a lot of snow that all melted at the same time, so with confidence, I just can't say with one hundred percent certainty that that problem is fixed, but I'm pretty sure it is and, you know, I'm going to do rain dance tomorrow out, out in the parking lot.
Just no high winds with that, okay? Just, just rain.
Yeah, I just, I, I just went, you know, I just, I'm excited about it, I really am, because we've talked for years about spending, what was it, a hundred and forty or a hundred and eighty thousand to, to repair, to, to repair that and it wasn't our problem to begin with. So it's interesting how things work out and I'm glad that we kind of waited. Now I just want to confirm, so I'm, I'm, I don't want Noah's Ark rain type thing, but I want a big rain so we can see what happens out there, so yeah, that's it.
Okay, so we will move on to- Thanks Keith.
You're welcome.
The minutes and financials, so I need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Thank you.
All second.
Thank you. Eric?
So approve the minutes from the organizational and regular board meetings on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. From the treasurer's consent agenda items, we have cash reconciliation as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Financial statements for January twenty twenty-four. To approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as presented, total grand fund resources of sixteen million- total grand fund resources of sixteen million, seven hundred and one thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and seventy-one cents. And total resources for all funds of twenty-one million dollars, five hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and five cents. By the way, for an English teacher, reading the numbers like this is, is a little bit of a challenge. It's not something I'm used to anymore.
You're a pointer finger.
I know. And to approve fiscal year twenty-twenty-four permanent appropriations as presented, total general fund appropriations of fourteen million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and five cents. And total appropriations for all funds of seventeen million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Point three, to accept the following donations. Fifty dollars from Levon Verity for the class of twenty-twenty-four senior trip. One hundred dollars from Michelle Prim for the class of twenty-twenty-four senior trip. Five hundred dollars from an anonymous donor for Noah Carrickson Scholarship. Two thousand dollars from Jim Schmidt Family and Dealerships for girls' basketball. And to recommend, to approve a resolution to approve Special Olympics Fund, Fund zero-two-two hyphen nine-five-zero-one. And thanks to Josh for really working hard on that to get things structured. Any discussion, any questions? I know we'll get to, this is Mike Shownell.
Well, I want to, one is the Special Olympics Fund is what's called an agency fund. And essentially, whatever monies come in to that fund, it will also be going out this year. So whatever comes in, hundred percent goes out. What doesn't pay for anything to put on the event will be going to those donations to those Special Olympic groups in the area. Also, back when I started here at Hicksville back in nineteen, I'm sorry, two thousand and nineteen, it hasn't been that long. And so.
Seems like it, huh?
No. So anyways, the board had said something about putting interest money into two funds that were curated for the HVAC or the heat pumps, replacement of those. And also like for the carpet. Back then, the interest rates was basically almost zero. That's three, four, five basis points or something is where we're at. And so nothing really moved on that. But interest rates have increased as far as interest earning income. And I would like to revisit that. My thoughts were to maybe go back one to two years and base some interest earnings on what our Star Ohio rate is. And so in two thousand and twenty-two, calendar year twenty-two, the January interest income rate was point one zero percent or ten basis points. By the end of twenty-two, it was four point one nine percent. And if I take the average of that for that entire year, it's one point four four. So my thought is, is to take that average interest rate times the amount of money that was in each one of those funds and then transfer the money out of the general fund and put it into these two funds, two basically capital outlay funds. Because essentially, all interest earned throughout this whole time has been put into the general fund. The calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, the average interest rate at Star Ohio has been five point two-three percent. So between these two, we could be looking at the neighborhood of thirty-five thousand dollars or forty-five thousand dollars plus into these two accounts. Currently, in one of the accounts, there's two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars and the other one's three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Well, by the time we have to replace all the carpet, by the time we replace the heat pumps and all those things associated with that, obviously inflation is going to factor in. And unless Eric, the expert over there knows something different, I don't think we got near enough money in there to replace those items. So I want to help start and now is the time, I think we have the, the ability to put money back into those accounts and continue to build them to take care of future expenditures. Eric, John, Keith and I did meet recently and one of our discussions was about the heat pumps. Out of the hundred and eighty-four that we have in the building, currently there's been four of them that have, has had to be replaced. Three of them, okay, three of them have been replaced. Typically, they say the last fifteen to twenty years, so we're in that time space right now. Our thought was, is to kind of repair them or replace them as needed. Mr. Bassett has talked about, one of the problems with them is not being able to repair them because parts aren't available. They don't make parts for our units anymore. So, but we also talked about, sometimes these units may last twenty or, or more than twenty years. And we definitely don't want to just mass change them. If we might be sitting on equipment, that still could have a fair number of years of viability to them. But either way, the day will come, we'll have to replace all these and we want to make sure that we have been proactive and have set aside funds so that we can take care of these liabilities.
Mike, I have a question. So I remember maybe we talked about that that day. So we decided to replace them as they break.
Correct.
Instead of doing them all at once. Would that money then come from the, these accounts that you're going to?
Yeah, I think that's how we would do it.
Pull it from there? Okay.
Just one question on the machines. Are they readily available? I mean, are we talking like when one breaks, are we able to replace it?
I was waiting to talk to them to figure out if we're looking to do like a whole lane or if we're looking to do a mass aid, mass aid breakdown. The main, I mean, you get fan motors for them, you get crushers for them. Pretty much the most of the parts, the biggest part is communication, there's certain, there's certain work for them for them to talk to their computer. Otherwise, they just run twenty-four seven and you can't adjust them. They go by factory default of sixty-eight, seventy-two and the computer can still run them up and down, but they'll run twenty-four seven all summer long. So, no, I have not checked. The last time I checked on one, we replaced the one on the second floor elementary restroom. That was about a four-week lead time back then. That's, that's before COVID. So I don't know what it is. They ordered cabinets and they said twelve to fourteen weeks for mobile cabinets and we delivered them tomorrow and it's been sixteen weeks. So everything has a long lead time, so.
So is it something that, barring space storing, is it something that we can have a unit or two on hand?
Well, they're all different because all the stuff upwards attaches to it. It's on one end or the other end. The way the water line comes in for the geothermal solution. So they're actually ordered for specific.
Okay.
Like right now, I have spare four hundred and sixty-volt fan motor on the shelf, two-seventy-seven. I got spare transformers and they all work on all the units and tell us the same thing. That's why I was telling Keith and Mike, you know, I don't want to put a Bosch unit here and a Kway here and a Trane here. Down, like right now, everyone's got a Kway. So other than the three Bosch units that we've changed to, for a better quality for the money, and it was about the same price. But it's nice to be able to not have a million spare parts. It's nice to have just, you know, a few ones that cause issues, so.
So I'm assuming that we would stay with the Bosch as we would?
I don't know that hundred percent.
Okay.
So back to the initial idea, I think it's a great idea. I mean, to move the interest over. To me, it just makes sense to start padding that front, knowing that we're going to have these major expenses coming up.
Yeah, it's inevitable. I agree.
And it's a very nice long-range plan, which is the nice thing about it.
Yeah.
We talked about, you know, like the, the units. We can replace those one at a time as they go out. Whereas the carpet, for example, that's all. Otherwise, you risk it not matching. So, you know, we want to be very conscious about that and prepare so that when that time comes, we can do it appropriately.
Part of the reason why I meant, because, you know, they say be proactive instead of reactive. And I don't want, all of a sudden, you have two or three heat pumps go out and one fall away and those teachers might be happy they don't have air conditioning, they don't have heat, they got to wait three or four weeks. I mean, heat wise, we put out space heaters in there, you know, keep them warm, but air conditioning parts might be on the other end.
Well, then we just have to remember how it was. You know, less than twenty, twenty years ago when we were roasting down there in the other room.
And most of us in this room can remember those days of those schools, so.
I might have to wear a tie.
You'll survive, Chris. We'll put a fan on you.
Okay, so I will look to put together the maths for next month and then have it, an item to transfer the money to those funds.
So just a question, are you going to do that like on a yearly basis or just like?
Well, that's a good question.
Does it matter? Are you just going to?
Me personally, it doesn't matter really.
Whatever's easiest for you makes sense.
It, it's easier, I guess, to make one transfer rather than doing the posting every single month. But we'll see how that goes.
So are you guaranteed a specific interest rate for any kind of maturity time? Or is that just a?
Not in, like, we have money in several different places. One is Star Ohio. That is one a lot of public entities, many public entities throughout the state use. It's liquid, it's secure. It's got a really strong rate. That changes as the market changes.
So it's like a money market account where it just kind of can add a whim?
Kind of like that, yes. Uh-huh. Then we have monies, we do have some monies at Hicksville Bank and CDs, so that's a set rate for a set amount of time. And then there's money with Premier, Premier Bank. And that is earning interest and there's actually, is running about five basis points more than what Star is. So that has changed a little bit. It was ten and then five, then the same, and then back to five. And it depends on their market and the things they're able to offer. So anyways, we've got money in several different things, don't have it all in one basket. And there's different, you know, vehicles of investment to spread out our risk and make sure we have cash flow available.
I was looking through the reports and that thought occurred to me that, that is one of your strong areas is you are so good about watching those investments and making sure they're in the best place. And I don't feel that we've always had that, so you've done a great job on that.
Thank you.
I was about to say, we're incredibly fortunate.
I appreciate that. Other, other items I want to just mention a little bit is through January, because I got some solid numbers as far as cash amounts and different funds. For example, our general fund through January of this year compared to January last year is up about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A lot of that has to do with school funding, fair school funding plan, that there's a motion on there to help make sure that we get that fully funded over the six-year period. But that has helped quite a bit to help increase our cash balance at this time. School district income tax has also come in better as, that has been strong. So anyways, that, that is looking stronger than has. It's only three hundred thousand over two years ago. So last year had taken a dip. General fund there, our permanent improvement. One of the things is we've been able to not use it a lot over the last couple of years. Again, those are repairs. If there's repairs that aren't in those other funds we have just been talking about, or we could use PI to help supplement it too. But our balance at, through the end of January was four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. A year ago in January is three ninety-three. If we go back to January of oh-one, it was a hundred and eighty-six thousand. So that has been building up because we just haven't had to have big expenditures coming out of there. But well, no, that can go like this. So I feel good about where it stands right now for that day when we do have those big expenditures that come down the line. Food service is. Is.
In the positive.
Is in the positive. It is a three thousand dollars lower than this time last year, so not a whole lot. But, and some of that's ebb and flow of when certain revenues come in. But we're very close to where we were a year ago. Actually, in January of two years ago, we were almost thirteen thousand dollars in the hole. So what has really changed it over the last couple of years is really through COVID and the extra funding that came through there. Being able to get the, or the free lunches for everybody. That is, is a funding mechanism that really, really helped the balance. But that has stopped. That, that is no longer the case anymore. The state has given supply chain money. And I think we're still due to get some this year. So that'd be nice. Last year was close to thirty thousand, year before was in the twenty thousand. So hopefully this year, we're still yet to get about thirty thousand there. But the lunchroom is doing really well. When I came here, that was in the hole. It had to be an advance transfer at the end of the year to get it out of, out of the red. So we'll be good going into the next year. On the negative side, and as everybody knows, inflation, cost of food is going up. And so in fact, Gordon's, where we get the majority of our food, just introduced cost increase. That was going to be March first, but now they've pushed it back to March fifteenth. I really don't know how the effect will be, but they did say it was an increase. So we'll take that in mind too. We do not want to get the lunchroom balance to where it was a few years back. On the athletic fund, or there's a lot of different funds because each, almost every sport has a, their own fund for certain things. But the athletic directors fund, we are up this year about eighteen thousand dollars where we were last year. So that is doing real well. Part of it is, Mr. Haught is, watches every penny that comes through his office, so.
Hot meat kettle.
That's true. That's true. But we've done really well there. Again, though, there's times when things come up and, you know, uniforms or other bigger supply or costs that, that can chip away. But we're over a hundred thousand right now. Last year was about eighty-three, eighty-three the year before, seventy-six. So we've been pretty consistent, other than this little bump we're seeing right now. So. That's all I have as far as the financial update. If anybody's got questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Rowan.
Thank you. Thank, yes, you're welcome.
And roll call please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five-zero. Onto the employment of certified staff. Need a motion, please?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Levy? And Mrs. Carrier? Recommend to approve the following as certified substitutes for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Kate Ann Chapman and Cornelio Mendoza. Recommend to approve the retirement resignation from Christine Blue as classroom instructor effective June first, twenty-twenty-four. Discussion? Anything? All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five-zero. Another motion?
I'll move.
Get one. Recommend to approve Paige Levy as a certified substitute for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. All right. No discussion, so roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Abstain.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero, one abstention. Another motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Jen and Eric? Recommend to approve the retirement resignation from Keith Countryman as superintendent with his last date to be July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Discussion?
Absolutely. There's this, there's discussion, yeah.
Disappointing news and good news, depending on how you look at it. I'm sure there'll be some people that will be disappointed. But I plan to retire, rehire. And we've had this discussion with the board. Part of the process is I have to resign from this current position. And then there's a timeline that we have to follow as far. as far as the rehiring back. So I appreciate you rehiring back me back when that time comes. And I hope I can continue to offer good services and stuff to the district. Thank you.
And to that end, I would like to, at some point this spring, send out some evaluation papers to all of you via email so that we can do an evaluation for Mr. Countryman before he does do that, retire. Okay? Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five zero. We're going to move down to page eight for the addendum for certified staff. And I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Galen?
I'll second.
And Jen? Recommend to approve the resignation from Josh Fries as head junior high boys track coach. And then recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the 2023-2024 school year for Josh Fries and track. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll back up to classified staff. And I will need a motion.
I'll move. I'll second.
Ty, so Eric and then Ty. Recommend to approve the reclassification of Tamara Changu from paraprofessional to English language learner student/family liaison, retroactive to September 26, 2023, and to increase her 2023-2024 school year contracted days from 163 to 173. Also, to recommend to approve the following as classified substitutes for the 2023-2024 school year, Katie Chapman and Nicole Yoder. To recommend to approve the retirement resignation from Tara Welling as high school secretary effective April 1st, 2024. I adore Tara. So she's, she's been doing this a long time, though. And I think it'll be a good break for her and for her family particularly. So I will miss, I will miss her. Other discussion? Thoughts? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five zero. I need another motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Jen, Galen, all right. To recommend to approve the transfer of Christine Shock from middle school secretary to high school secretary effective April 1st, 2024. Mr. Highlander, you know what you're in for, I'm sure. If not, I have plenty of information I can share. All right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Abstain. Motion passes four zero, one abstention from the favorite sister. All right. And we're going to go down again to page eight for the addendum to classified staff. And I need a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve Paige Levy as a classified substitute for the 2023-2024 school year. Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Carrier? Mr. Levy?
Abstain.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes four zero with one abstention. We are moving on to other business, and I need a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Galen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ty. Recommend to approve the current classified employee salary schedule adopted June 27th, 2022, to update substitute rates for cooks, playground supervisors, and principal secretaries, and to include a new classification of English language learner student/family liaison. To recommend to approve the classified substitute rate of pay for cooks, secretaries, and playground aides to $13.79 an hour, retroactive to January 1st, 2024. Recommend to approve a resolution authorizing 2024-2025 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and recommend to approve the 2024-2025 school year calendar. Discussion?
Should I abstain?
If you do and I do, it would still be a three to two. And that's a question. Do we need to abstain? Mike? Do you know?
I'm not sure why.
Well, just because it would benefit a spouse and a sister.
If we're talking about general rates, it's not.
That's what I thought if it was all together.
I think you're okay.
Substitute rates, not.
Yeah.
Substitute rates.
Yeah, you're, you're fine voting.
Different rates.
Well, it says principal, playground supervisors, principal secretaries, principal secretaries would be. So I was thinking, since it's the large group that it applies to everyone and not a particular, correct?
I think you're fine about.
Okay.
I was surprised to see graduation, that school continued after graduation in the calendar.
Yeah, what?
It's been a while since we've had that.
Hmm, no comment. Okay.
Hey, it's not a Memorial Day weekend for me. It's the first time in many years. Just a surprise, that's all.
Yeah, it is a little bit different. Any other discussion? All right, kudos, by the way, to the people that are out on the playground with those high energy kids. Holy mackerel. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five zero. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. Recommend to approve resolution number 2024 hyphen zero five, Fair School Funding Plan Inc. membership.
Any commentary?
Just, just bear, I talked a little bit about it earlier, about our Fair School Funding Plan and the funding of that. It's, we're currently in the third year of the phase in. This next year will be the fourth year. But then there will be a new buying budget in the state of Ohio. And I think it would be very important that the state approves the fifth and sixth year of that Fair School Funding Plan rollout. So to make sure we've got more tools in the tool bag to help, I think it's important that we pass this resolution.
Okay. All right, other thoughts? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Any old business for anyone? Okay. Any discussion of anything that we've covered today, extra? We have no unannounced guests. We are not going into executive session. So I need a motion to adjourn.
I do have a new business. So I guess maybe it should have been discussion. I was contacted by somebody out of the community for there's Bill Hinch that graduated from Hicksville. And he did the painting at the State House. They had suggested that we maybe do some sort of plaque or memorial or something for him to help honor him and what he did. I know he gave a speech at Rotary, said he'd be willing to come in and give a speech or like, if we want to do a pep rally or anything like that. Just that he was open to anything. And my first thought is just an opinion. But there on the gym where we have the cross-country pictures and some sports memorabilia, it would be nice to give credit to other successful people who came out of Hicksville, so.
Yeah, I think that's actually a good idea. Any other thoughts on that? If we can make a plan to recognize him?
Whatever you guys desire.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Not a good idea, Jen? No, it doesn't matter.
No, I just have no.
No comment. Okay. All right. So I think we should probably add that and get something rolling as far as doing that. And also maybe keeping an ear out for other alumni that have done things that are pretty kind of cool. I don't know, like Joseph Christopher Levy, even if we're talking about art, that would be another one. Okay. That might be something to put out on the, I don't know how we would find out.
Well, I caution you a little bit on that.
Walls of fame are very slippery.
They are.
Yeah, and we've talked about that, too.
I wouldn't recommend putting it down by the gym where those other items are at, that's the sports area. We can find another place.
I was thinking of that. There's several trophy cases.
Trophy cases where art's displayed and that kind of thing that maybe.
That might be a better option to do it that way. And we could do that even in the front of the school. You know, it'd be nice if we had a picture of it. I'm sure we can get that. And, yeah, so. I, I think that would be a better option myself. I think.
Yeah, I just.
I don't think you should start mixing the the sports and non-sports.